Next case tonight is 17 SN 0807 in the Midlothian Magisterial District. This is BWS Enterprises LLC and Sean Sawyer. This is a rezoning case to townhouse residential and multifamily residential plus conditionally used plan development to permit ordinance exceptions. This is a project that's over a 44 acre site. It involves 432 dwelling units, 275 of those are multifamily, 160 of those are townhomes, and there's an expansion to the Midlothian Boulevard and three lane access at intersection of Route 60 and sidewalks along Midlothian Road Boulevard being proposed as well as off-site Midlothian Turnpike Improvement proffers. Would you like to have a full comprehensive staff presentation of this or we want to move forward?
I'm sorry, I think Madam Chair that the applicant's agent was going to do an overview of the project if that would be helpful to the board.
Is the applicant present?
So, I'm Dave Anderson with Timmons Group representing the applicant. I did and do have a presentation, but it was under the assumption that there was a staff presentation sort of laying the groundwork for that, so if that's...
That's absolutely fine.
Okay.
So, Mr. Gillies, if we could...I'm sorry, I...thank you, Ms. Pierce.
Yes ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey, this request is 18...excuse me, 17 SN 0807 as Mr. Gillies noted, and if we could go to the next slide. The request is a 44 acre property. It is located on the south line of Old Otterdale Road, south of Midlothian Turnpike, also located at the western terminus of Midlothian Wood Boulevard. Properties that are located to the east would be the Midlothian Wood Condominium Project. We do have two subdivisions that are located to the south and the west. Properties to the northeast are for the Ivy Mont Shopping Center and directly to the north adjacent to Midlothian Turnpike is commercial zoning. It is not yet developed. This property was zoned in 1987. It was part of a larger project that did front on Midlothian Turnpike. Today, the uses that are permitted on the subject property would include those that are in the C3 district as limited plus light industrial and office uses. This is a copy of the applicant's proffered concept plan. This is a residential development that does consist of townhomes and multifamily apartment dwellings. Basically, access would be the main access from Midlothian Turnpike with a secondary access off of Midlothian Wood Boulevard. 160 townhomes are proposed. They would be located towards the eastern portion of the property. They would be two and three stories and basically arranged as a traditional neighborhood design with the majority of the units that would be accessed by alleys and have on-street parking. There are buffers and landscaping and setbacks that have been provided adjacent to the Midlothian Wood community. Central to the property is the multifamily use. These are 275 apartments within a four-story building. They are oriented towards the Boulevard entrance with a centrally located main courtyard. And then you see to the western portion of the property, there is approximately 28 acres that is environmentally protected and will remain undeveloped. The applicant has proffered community design elements including shared use path across Old Otterdale Road that would tie in with Midlothian Wood Boulevard and also tie into internal sidewalks within the community, pedestrian lighting, landscaping, focal points, also recreational amenities that would include a clubhouse, a pool, community and fitness center. There are some exceptions that are requested to ordinance standards to accommodate this concept and design. The applicant has also furnished some architectural standards for all of the buildings as well as residential buildings to include foundation roofing treatment, street-facing facades that would be consistent on both sides. The residential buildings will employ an early era architecture and they have offered quality materials excluding vinyl. The townhome elevations would be consistent with what we have here in the exhibit which is a colonial revival design. There are a maximum of six units that can be attached. The units that are located south of Midlothian Boulevard and closest to Midlothian Wood would be no more than two stories and they would actually be oriented towards Midlothian Wood development. There is four-sided architecture and there is a minimum percentage of masonry required with each unit as well as rear-loaded garages. As one building that is proposed as four stories, it was very important to minimize the overall building scale of the multifamily buildings so that it would complement the community and the neighboring townhomes. This is the architectural design that has been offered as part of this application and this design and the materials are what we feel accomplish this goal. In addition, you will see that the multifamily building is focused around a centrally located main courtyard and this also assists in minimizing the building mass. There is an addendum that has been distributed today to the board and it introduces a new or additional material for the exterior of the multifamily building. And this amendment to the condition of the textual statement as well as an addendum to the proffer to refer to this revision was submitted after the advertisement of this case, so the board will need to unanimously agree to suspend the rules to consider this amendment. Planning staff is supportive of these amendments. The traffic impact of this development would be valued at $2,498,520 and this is based on your road cash proffer for each townhome and apartment unit. The applicant has proffered to provide road improvements. They are listed here basically to the main access and Route 60 as well as an extension of Midlothian Wood Boulevard and a sidewalk that would connect onto Midlothian Wood Boulevard. There are also some off-site Midlothian Turnpike improvements that have been provided. The next slide will show you basically these improvements. They are in Exhibit I of your report and they would be located along the eastbound lanes of Old Otterdale Road to the Ivy Mont Shopping Center entrance. The total value that's estimated for these improvements is $1,41,850 and this is $1,456,670 less than the anticipated traffic impact of the proposed development. There were two community-wide meetings on this case and in these meetings concerns were expressed which included the existing drainage and flooding problems that are experienced within the Midlothian Wood development and the impacts of any upstream development. And to address these impacts, the applicant has proffered that drainage from this development would be designed such that runoff from the impervious areas would be directed away from that community. The planning commission on a vote of three in favor and one opposed does recommend approval and acceptance of the proffered conditions which begin on page 23 of your report. At the commission's public hearing, there were citizens that spoke in support of the case addressing the Midlothian Wood concerns relative to drainage and neighborhood buffers, enhancements to the village, offering a project that was preferable to the non-residential uses that the property is currently zoned for development, and promoting residential projects that support commercial uses within the village. The commission agreed in their support of the proposed development concept and quality. In their discussion relative to the transportation impacts, planning commissioners supporting the request did note that the proposed uses would generate less traffic than as currently zoned. They view the case as unique given that the applicant's significant investment to rectify these ongoing drainage problems within the Midlothian Wood community and also recognized the support from those area residents. The Metalka District Commissioner did not support the request expressing concerns for deviation from the road cash proffer policy in funding public improvements other than roads, the precedent and the absence of staff validation of the estimated drainage improvement cost. The planning department is recommending approval of the request to include the amended conditions in your addendum and the request does comply with our comprehensive plan relative to land uses and density. It does ensure compatibility and promotes transition to area residential and anticipated commercial development and it does offer quality design and architecture. Transportation Department is recommending denial. There are impacts on the road network that are specifically attributable to the proposed development which have not been addressed to include increased traffic volumes and safety on area roads. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Is the applicant present?
Thank you for that. I think that'll help as I go through my discussion. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Casey, my name's Dave Anderson. I'm a planner and engineer with Timmons Group representing the applicant. The applicant's also here. I'm ecstatic to be here today. One thing, a personal note, I was able to send my daughter off to college today, this morning, and beneath all the tears, it was a really, really great day. And this case, I think, represents a really great day for Chesterfield County because what it does, and I've seen a lot of cases, this represents an opportunity to start fulfilling what goals have been long held by the county to create walkable places and walkable centers where there's a win all around. There's a win for county government, there is a win for the county citizens, and there's a developer in town who now wants to do this the right way. We've been at it a long time, but we're excited to be here tonight and I wanted to share a little bit with you. I've met with each of you, but I do think for the public, I would like to share a couple of things that makes this case special. First of all, you did hear that this is an already zoned case and what we're talking about is trying to create the right thing in this area and the right thing is not more shopping centers, it's more people in the village. And so what we're trying to do is trying to create that proper mix in this area that is representative of what the community wants. In order to do that, you need to get things right, not just architecture. And a lot of times, we talk a lot about architecture, but we don't talk about what's outside the buildings. We don't talk about how we're connecting folks. These exhibits here represent examples of what we have designed this early and they're in the case as proffered items that speak to how the roads and the streets and the walkable spaces are created and generated. So they're in the case, they're codified into the case. So I thought it was important to show that because what, at the end of the day, if a place is not beautiful, people won't walk through it. They won't feel like it's theirs and so they'll hop in their car and at that point, people can go to Goochland or to Henrico or wherever else. But this is a place made to feel like it is their place, walkable to many places. So we talk about walkability a lot and just for the public's benefit, that yellow line represents what we think is sort of where the western edge of the Midlothian villages is going to be set through this process of updating the plan. Just beyond the picture is Route 288. But as you enter into the village, basically, this is what we're talking about building right nearby the edge of the village. So we've called it a gateway for the village for some time. What's incredibly important about this walkability context is that most often, our developments don't consider true walkability. This area in red represents areas that can be walked to legitimately and safely walked to within five minutes. And it's very important that we're not just walking loop trails and coming back to the home. You're able to do commerce here, you're able to go to stores, you're able to go to shops and restaurants. We're providing safe access to other developments, some that already exist, some that are under development right away. So it's very important that we understand that. Ivy Mont just to our east is going to be the beneficiary of having people who can now visit them on foot. We talked a lot about architecture over the last 17 months. In fact, this image right here represents what was shown on the elevations. It represents the 11th iteration of architecture, the 11th effort of trying to get this right. And boy, I think we did get it right with materials and so forth to where we have something that's proud and sets a fairly high bar for development that is yet to come through here. So we're very proud of what we've done there. A little bit about bringing people into an area that has a lot of residential already. One of the things I want to share with you, yes, this space here that we're identifying, it's environmentally sensitive and it would not be developed anyway. However, look at the value of protecting that area with trees and environmental sensitive spaces to existing neighborhoods. Oftentimes, you don't have that and that's why you have people that are very bothered by development coming in because it seems to change what it is that's next to them. Here, we have communicated closely with Midlothian Wood, with Otterdale and with Little Tomahawk and they recognize the value of this development being close to them, yet it's not going to feel that way. So I wanted to share that with you as well. There's also improvements going to be done out on Midlothian Turnpike. These are part of the proffered improvements. Because we feel like we're a gateway, we want to basically represent that where when you come across that bridge, the railroad tracks, you're coming into a special place. Right now, this is what the condition of that road looks like and it, right now, it's 55 miles an hour speed limit. What we want to do is we want to enhance that road earlier, closer to the edge of the gateway so that you recognize that you have now entered this special village and so it would look very similar to the road a little bit to the east. And so that's in the proffered improvements that Jane mentioned to you. We spent a lot of time, and this was from the inception of our discussions with our neighbors, learning about the existing problems that Jane mentioned about drainage. And this is Midlothian Wood, basically, our neighbor to the east. And what happens currently is that area in red drains to areas in Midlothian Wood that create currently real problems. It creates problems for the county. My understanding is that the fire department has to go out on occasion and open up emergency gates to allow residents to leave. There's constant flooding and maintenance issues for the county and it's because all of this area is draining right through and the design was perhaps not done quite the way it should have been. So when we first sat down with them and said, "We want to do this," you can imagine that there were a lot of people that were very startled and concerned about it. So we thought about it and we worked on how in the world can we make this situation better? Even though it's something that preceded anything that development has brought, how can we make this work? And the drainage proffer that you see there is the only way we could see this working and we think it's a great solution. And the drainage proffer says, "No drainage resulting from the construction of impervious areas or buildings on the property shall enter Midlothian Wood, period." And so what that means is this area that's in green, which used to flow down through this area and flooded Midlothian Wood, now will be redirected into one of three areas, three pipe systems that will allow that to sort of bypass Midlothian Wood and actually reduce the water, the flow that goes to and through Midlothian Wood. We would not be eliminating all issues perhaps of Midlothian Wood's flooding, but what we're actually doing is taking off the table water that currently flows through there. Ultimately, what's interesting about this is when we rezone this property, if this property is approved tonight, the actual post-development total flow will actually decrease. But with the by-right development, even though we are held to Department of Environmental Quality Standards to keep peak flows, the total flow will ultimately increase and that's not going to help Midlothian Wood one bit. And so we feel that through this proffer, we're actually helping Midlothian Wood tremendously. We're doing this and it's benefiting the county as well. It costs a lot of money to make that proffer number seven in the case. This is just, we've had engineers assess what this additional cost is. We've assessed the additional in-ground cost and I will say that this is costs that nobody's going to see. This is cost redirecting and re-channeling the flow in a different direction, both in building and in bringing in dirt to make sure that that water does go a different direction of $2.7 million. So it's an in-ground cost that we know we have to deal with. There's also costs that we're putting into and getting credit for from the county in terms of value by making these improvements off-site to Midlothian Turnpike. We think it's going to be a spectacular entrance into the village when we do that. I do want to mention, it was not mentioned at the planning commission and I do appreciate Jane saying something briefly about it tonight. One of the things that we are certainly not getting credit for in the context of the transportation proffers is the fact that we are in fact an already zoned property. Even though the property's not built yet, we're already zoned and if we were to look at the proposed development versus by-right development and the impacts that will be had at some point in the future with reasonable development expectations, you can see here, and this is just generated through a manual from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, Trip Generation Manual, you will see it's a tremendous reduction in vehicles traveled as a result of this development. And in fact, what it doesn't show is the increase in pedestrianism because of this development. So there's no credit on this and we recognize that. The recommendation for denial by the Transportation Department, we know that because of the way the policy's written, that he's not in a position to recommend approval. But we will see improvements, real improvements. Pieces and parts of this case really add up to make a tremendous, tremendous community. So when we add these together, the great architecture that we're looking at along with the many other things that we're proposing, that we've proposed, the neighbors, we hope to hear support tonight, the quality of the architecture, the entry to the village, and creating a community that we have longed for for a tremendous amount of time and not yet really been able to achieve in the village, we're very proud to bring this. And so with that, I will stop, allow the public hearing and would love to reserve some comment for after.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just ask the applicant one question. Mr. Anderson, real quick, do you believe that the proffers, that a proffer in this case are reasonable under state law?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on case 17 SN 0807, BWS Enterprises. Is there anyone who would like to speak to this case?
Madam Chair, and just as a reminder, you're going to need to suspend the rules on this. You could do it now or you could do it at the end.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules?
Sound moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name's Chad Nixon. I'm Midlothian District. I live in Little Tomahawk, which is just to the west. I'll try to be brief. I want to commend BWS and the planning department, PEPHY over there. Over the past couple of years, we've had a few developers come in and with the previous planning director. It felt very cloak and dagger. With BWS, they have actively sought out input from our neighborhood and from the adjoining neighborhoods and not just from them, but from the planning. We stayed more attached to this development than I think I've seen anything happen in Midlothian since I've lived here since 2008. I think the project brings value to the area, the improvements on Old Otterdale and people walk on that street now every day and I pass them and scares me to death because people fly down there. We had an accident yesterday that actually shut the road down for a little bit. So the walkability helps an already existing issue. There was, you know, concern about, you know, I think in our whole entire area, I think there was like 2,100 apartments or something being built and I have children that go to Walkins and we're all aware of the overcrowding there, but with even that concern, the developer discussed with us the type of occupants that are looking to attract that, you know, is not as high an impact on our schools as some of the other developments in the area could potentially be drawing. So again, I just want to commend BWS and the planning committee for doing such a good job and keeping us in touch with this project.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Marilyn Mayer and I'm the president of the Midlothian Wood Homeowners Association. And as the president, I am speaking for the board this evening. Through this very extensive process, we've had many community and small meetings with BWS Enterprises. Mr. Sawyer and Mr. Prodan have really listened to us very carefully and they're very mindful of the concerns that the community had. They've worked with us every step of the way as we've tried to work on our concerns such as drainage, that's a very big concern for us, keeping the neighborhood feel of Midlothian Wood and also the buffer between our properties. The board feels that BWS Enterprises has worked really diligently to become a good neighbor to Midlothian Wood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
My name is Jimmy Yaxx. I am owner of Hot House Yoga Studio in Ivy Mont Square Shopping Center, which is directly adjacent to this proposed development. And I stand here in 100% favor of moving forward to this project. I think that the community, the residential community and the business community have a direct relationship with each other that is not going to be any more evident than what this proposal may bring. We grow together and we evolve together and we change together and we look forward to the future together. As I have been involved in Midlothian Village for now four years as a business owner, I've also been privy to seeing comings and goings of other businesses. And I see currently that there are a lot of vacancies in the commercial side, the small business ownership side. And from my discussions with many other business owners, I know that, and personally, we are marginally successful right now and we all want to be a bigger part of this community. And so when I am well aware of my lease negotiations coming up in one year, I want to go into that negotiation with a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of excitement, because I know that the community is moving forward with the residential development. This development is going to help so many of these small businesses along with the one that's already underway across the street. So I ask you all to really consider this opportunity to help the business communities as well as provide a wonderful community for people to be involved in and really get to feel and experience how wonderful Midlothian Village can be. So I ask you all for your approval and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
My name is Dennis Shand and I also live in Midlothian Wood. I'm also on the condominium board. I'm echoing what many people have said to you, this is a good project. And when we first got the letter from the state DEQ back in February of 2017 telling us that someone wanted to build on this property, it frightened us. The total property is about 100 acres that drains onto us and if you can imagine the orientation of that property draining from northwest to southeast, it runs right onto our property. What BWS is going to do is they're going to change the drainage profile of the 30 acres that this is going to be developed on so that it drains in the other direction. This is a big deal for us. We know there are some questions about the proffer amount and when we were at the planning commission, Mr. Smith pointed out from the traffic department that the traffic that this generates is going to be less than half of the traffic that would be generated under the existing zoning if it were to be developed. The other thing that he said was that if the property were developed under the existing zoning, there would be no proffer at all. So it's really a tit-for-tat. And just one last thing. Supervisor Haley, you said at one other meeting we attended and it was about another project, that you visioned Midlothian as a destination, not a pass-through. This type of project makes it a destination. You can't have a village without people and this will attract people to the village. So please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Amy Satterfield and I am the president of the Village of Midlothian Volunteer Coalition. I'd just like to hug the man who just spoke because finally, we are getting to the point where people understand what we are attempting to do, what the coalition has been trying to do for almost 30 years. That is, quality projects, each piece coming in and fitting in and benefiting the whole. And the whole is not just about the people, it's about the business community. It's about everyone coming together and understanding that when you create senses of place, when you foster... you foster people being able to walk to businesses, being able to experience their communities outside of their cars, you get a kind of vibrancy you can't get any other way. And to hear these folks see that that is in fact the right thing to do, because when we started this journey, and it's been a long one, when we started this journey, the size of this apartment building and the number of houses was very upsetting to people. And I think over the course of time, when everyone felt like they had a voice, when issues were addressed, architecture was revisited, as Mr. Anderson did, like 11 times. All of this together creates the kind of community support that makes great projects come out of the ground. I'm absolutely grateful to Ms. Haley for ensuring that everyone got heard and that this project comes forward as a complete and total benefit to the village and the coalition absolutely supports it and we thank you for your time and work.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Okay, the public hearing is closed. This case is in the Midlothian District. Ms. Haley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I think that what we're hearing tonight is this is the beginning and it's so exciting because we've been talking about sort of that transformation and that change that we want to see as we start to create the village. And I cannot thank these applicants enough for their patience because they are some of the folks spearheading this transformation and change. And it took a little longer maybe than they would have anticipated, but recognizing that we are, as a community, looking at transformation and change and welcoming projects like this, but we haven't really seen this exact type of project at a community level that folks were exactly comfortable with to begin with. And I commend all of you, including Mr. Anderson and the whole team, for the work that you did in communicating with the community. I know Pepe Jones, Amy Satterfield, everybody's worked together to bring this really, really exciting project. I think that one of the things we look at when we look at a project like this is that we recognize that there are considerations to be made. And one of the things that I think this board has said from the very beginning is that we want to have that ability to look at every single project individually. And while we know transportation may have to say that's their recommendation, that every project needs to rise or fall based upon all the uniqueness and the value that it brings in totality to the community. And I think that what you're hearing, both from, I thank the Planning Commission and Mr. Anderson for their entire presentation encompassing all of the issues, as well as the speakers, what you're seeing is the totality of value that this project's going to bring. And so unless there are any outstanding questions, I am going to move, I am going to be very, very honored and happy to move for approval of this project, case number 17 SN0807, subject to the proffered conditions.
Do I have a second?
And that's the proffered conditions as amended by the addendum?
As amended by the addendum. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we needing to suspend the rules?
We did that already.
I would just like to comment that when we talked about, when we reduced proffers, this is what we were looking at. We were looking at, it's not about whether you pay the proffers, it's what value do you bring, does the project bring to the community? And I do agree, this is a perfect example of that. You know, it's solving the drainage problem plus it's bringing really what's needed in the village instead of what's already zoned there. And I agree, thank you for the applicant, for like you said, nine iterations of what it was going to look like, but you know, I mean, I feel like that's the way that it should be. You start out with something and then you start looking to improve it. And that's where we need to be negotiating and saying, "Well, you're doing this, so even though we have these rules, this is bringing more value than the rules we have." So I'm very happy to vote for the project. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.